Director Asner. Director Byers. Director Fossner.
Here.
Director Hudson.
Here.
Director Muller.
Here.
Vice President Patra.
Here.
And President Cuneo.
Here.
All right, let's have a pledge of allegiance for you. My pledge of allegiance is the flag and the United States of America.
And to the where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Would someone like to make a motion to excuse our sick brother? Colin Feder.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, close. Motion carries. Let's hope everyone gets well soon. All right. Kevin Coram. Budget process update, please. That's all.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cuneo, Vice President Patra, Board of Education, and Dr. Keenan. My name is Jeff Hugg. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Special School District. Slide please. And we'll talk this evening. I'll provide a presentation on the update to current budget processes, where we are, what we're doing, and how we'll proceed for the remainder of the year. Slide please. So, the FY '23 budget goals were created by the Budget Committee and explained in detail in greater detail in the fall. Those goals are goal number one, equity; goal number two, staffing; goal number three, regular support; and goal number four, facilities. These are the four main areas that Special School District will continue to provide resources for our students, our partner districts, and our buildings, so that all of our students and staff can be successful. Slide please. So, as we move into the spring and further into the budget process, we can look at the major revenue, and this will be the budget assumptions for revenue. So, it's a non-reassessment year, so that means real estate will not be reassessed. So, we'll look at receiving increases from new construction as well as personal property increase. In a non-reassessment year, as long as the economy is good, we look at, we see an area an increase of $2 to $3 million of local revenue. Well, that indicated what the budget will look like for this year. What that means is each spring, DESI provides guidance on where we can make assumptions for the foundation formula, for Prop C, which is your sales tax, for Classroom Trust Fund, which is your gambling fund, and then the transportation as well. So, we'll start seeing that guidance in probably around March. It doesn't mean we can't make assumptions on our own. Really, right now, what we're hearing is that they intend to fully fund the formula. Prop C, which is our sales tax, are above where they were at this point last year, and so they're being, they're being received at a much greater rate. So, sales tax looks good. The foundation formula looks like it should be fully funded, as long as there's no major shutdown. The gaming money should be coming back. And then we'll see, transportation is well fully underfunded, as you know. There'll be a push in the legislature this spring to see about adding some money to that. Whether that happens or not, that will, that will be seen. So, we'll start to get some information from DESI, probably come March, with where we can go. They like to see what they have in revenues for this current year, so that they can fund the remainder of the year, and then they start to give guidance from that point out. Investment earnings, while we're seeing an uptick in basis points or interest rate, we probably won't see enough to make those earnings go up substantially. So, we're predicting those to be flat. And to give you some idea, prior to the pandemic, we were seeing 2.0% interest rate. Now, we're seeing 0.2. And we're excited about getting to 0.2, because we weren't, we weren't there. We're finally getting 0.2 on some commercial paper. So, that kind of shows you where we are compared to where we were. It's going up a little bit, but it won't make a major difference in our revenue. And then, as we spoke about in the past, Medicaid revenues were, will increase approximately by $2.5 to $3 million, and that's because of direct servicing cost of government increases. So, we'll continue to look at that as an avenue of revenue. Next slide, please. And so, when there's revenues, we have to have expenditures. And as we know, through the two years of negotiations, we know that next year, we'll be looking at a 3.5% to 4% increase for salaries. So, we'll continue to monitor those. We'll continue to monitor retirements and vacancies. Right now, we have a range of 3% to 5% on our benefit increases, and we'll know more as we get a little bit further into the spring, and that tightens up a little bit as well. Purchased services and supplies, we're always monitoring those. We'll see some increases in electric, gas, other, other goods, but we'll be able to reduce some areas as well. And then, we will continue with our disproportionate requirement, 15% of our car fee money, which is approximately $5 million. Slide please. And then again, we've, we've talked about this in several budget presentations. We will always focus on all, some, and few. When we talk about all, we talk about all of our 22 partner districts. When we talk about some, we talk about our 11 that receive disproportionate funding. And then, when we talk about our few, we talk about our eight, which is part of our Distress Community Index. And just as a reminder, when we talk about the Distress Community Index, we're looking at zip codes, areas of zip codes that are within our district. And we look at high school diploma rates. We look at poverty rates, adult unemployment, housing vacancies, and different criteria that indicate that we need to put some more resources as far as equity towards those, those areas. Next slide, please. And again, we've talked about this, but I wanted to remind you, when we look at zero-based budgeting, it gives our schools a chance to really take a look at their budget, see where their goals are, what our district partners' goals are, and how the budget can help them, as opposed to us giving them a budget and saying, please make do. So, we want to, we want our needs and our students to drive that budget. And again, with this, as we've talked about, needs, wants, and enhancements. Slide please. And then, kind of where we are, and give you an update on the calendar. In December, we met with all of our directors and all of our building principals. We talked about their needs, wants, and enhancements. We talked about staffing, and we talked about what they were looking for for next year. In January and into the early part of February, we'll do the same thing with our partner districts. And then, as we move further into January and into February, we'll meet with not only our partner district director, but with their superintendent and their cabinet as well, so that that communication between SSD, what we're doing, and what they're doing is cohesive, is consistent. Next slide, please. And so, then, on February 8th, we'll have a workshop, and that's when we'll bring back some, some preliminary numbers. We'll bring back some revenue numbers and the expenditure numbers. We'll take a look at also what the requests are as far as staffing, as far as adding positions, and some other areas, maybe some programs and some licenses around there. But we'll bring that back to you on the 8th, so that you guys can hear it, see it, take that in, and then we'll bring it back to you on the 25th for preliminary approval. Next slide, please. And then, after, and I, we'll go back here. After we bring that to you in February, then we will take that to the Governing Council early March for their approval as well. And then, we'll continue to work on it throughout the spring. We'll provide updates. And then, we'll bring it back to you for approval in May, and then the Governing Council in June. Next slide, please. That concludes my budget update. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this point.
I have one. In the budget that we go over, is that going to include those aspects of possible increase that we looked at in reference to payroll?
I don't.
Bringing up payroll wages that will be included in, in the budget deployed.
It won't be in there, because we're still talking through that. But what it'll do is it'll give us time to increase it if we need to. We'll know where we are. We'll know what we're looking at, and we'll know what that increase is. And then, as we talk about those other increases, we can just add that as we go along. And as long as that's in there by that final May budget, we're good.
Another question is, on our construction projects that we've got coming up, are we looking in that budget for those figures to be adjusted as well as for what we'll have to spend in, in the construction projects that we've got on board?
Yes. Yes. So, those construction projects will be included in that capital project fund, which fall in that total budget. And I'll show you where that falls. We'll show it by general revenue, or general special, which is our salaries, and then we'll show it by capital projects as well. And we'll show you that breakdown.
When do we anticipate that some of that particular construction project will begin?
So, right now, we have a couple going on. We have South Tech going on, which is the office renovation. We have Bridges going on, which has started. We just wrapped up Audiology. We wrapped up North Tech last year. So, we have several projects going on. We've purchased the land for the new garage. That should start next year, and then we have possible central office renovations as well, which will start. Those will be reflected in the future budgets, while those current projects are reflected in the current budget.
And we also, in projects that we've started, have we got an estimate as to what percentage of our budget that we're spending in contractors are meeting our goals that we set for North and, and African-American business?
Yep. And that's something we continue to review. That's something we're working on now, and that's something we'll bring back to the group, or to the board in February with, with what we're looking at. And we'll show how that all breaks down per, per project, per group, and per request.
That'll be in February?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Thank you for this presentation, Joe. You mentioned investment earnings will remain flat.
My read of market is that it's going up, so I was curious to kind of explain what our investments are, or who files what.
Yep. So, currently, we have 50% commercial paper, which is a, it's an equity that is backed by the government. It's in good standing. We, we can't get into the stock market. We can't get in, and we can't trade equities. Our money has to be protected. And so, when we're looking at that, yes, the, you know, you see the valuation. You see the market today, you know, make a move from 300 under to ending about 125 up for the day. We can't get in on that. What we base our interest or our investments on are CDs, different, very safe vehicles like that. And so, what we're seeing is we're not seeing, well, the stock market's taking off. We're not seeing those interest rates increase too much. And so, as I was saying, prior to the pandemic, we saw interest rates, whether it was overnight or just a liquid fund that we could put our money in, we saw those in the twos. Right now, we're seeing those in the, the liquid funds for most, and right now, it's 0.045. And so, we're not seeing the increase in that. But if the yield curve goes out and goes up, we'll see a slight increase. We have to put our money in for that to really make a difference, six months at a time. And so, we've built an investment ladder, so that we have different money come and do at different times. But when you're that far out, and we're not seeing the rates go up, we really won't capture that as we go through.
Excellent. Are there some forecasts that you're reading as far as down the road?
We're expecting it to increase, as long as there's not another shutdown, another setback. We're expecting it to increase as long as the economy goes that way. But it's not going to increase at anything greater than, it's, it's not going to go from that, as far as we can see and what we're reading. Steve will send something out every day, kind of, kind of spank, send something out every day. So, we follow that, and those projections are, especially with interest rates, you know, and the Fed going to make some moves on those, depending on what the economy does. Right now, even if it does go up, it's not going to go up to a point where it's going to make a difference in revenue stream for us. And if that changes, great, and I'll, I'll let you guys know.
And just a couple questions, because it was, one thing, thank you for your presentation. Presenting it to the Governing Council. Current fund balance. Can we make sure it's, as I said, we also put down the month that we have. Don't forget, talk about the organization's budget class.
Our policies and board recommendations.
The next, but I also like the month that we have. The other thing is, there's, we're taking the stocks, yes, but now, how's that, how's that going?
So, as we look at, we're just, we just had another tax payment today. And so, what we're looking at is, we are looking at, compared to last year, right now, we received $194 million in tax revenue. At this point, last year, we were at $183. We won't really know how that impacts us until we're all the way through January. And as Dr. Keenan and I were talking the other day, we were projecting that it would decrease our revenue in that area of $13 million, based on having to roll the tax rate back.
So, it won't be, it won't be 13, 13, 13, so?
We're shooting for 13. It could be anywhere in that range, depending. And as we were talking about, it could also, we may only see $6 million of a reduction, because there may be a higher rate of people paying their taxes. It just, it varies from year to year. So, right now, our best guess is historically would be that $13 million to $15 million range. But as I said, right now, we're at $194. Last year, at this time, we were at $183. We'll continue to monitor that, because our next payment may be significantly less than what it was last year. So, we'll know more towards the end of January and into February.
Well, we do present that to the Governing Council, and we explain that to them, just to make sure that they understand. And I'm, I'm not seeing it very well. It's just the timeline. There seems to be confusion over the strategic plan and the broken, the rolling, that one. I just don't want to pick the names. Thank you for your presentation, and having it brief, to the point, and had a chance to read.
Thank you.
Next, Transportation's five-year plan.
Good evening, Dr. Cuneo. Vice President Patra, Board of Education, and Dr. Keenan. My name is Jeff Hugg. I'm the Chief Operating Officer. With me this evening is Kenny Mulder, our Director of Transportation, and he's going to walk you through the five-year plan. Thank you, Dr. Hugg. And as you said, I'm Kenny Mulder, Director of Transportation. Next slide, please. So, for a quick overview of our, our new members, since the last time I reported out, transportation services are available to all students attending SSD managed schools and programs, including our separate public schools, career and technical education schools, and vocational training programs. The Transportation Department, we oversee two in-house locations. Our South Garage is on our South Tech campus. Central Garage is in Olivet. And then, we have a contracted service provider that we utilize, and their location is on our North Tech campus. I also oversee three partnership agreements. Parkway, in contract with Parkway, Melville, and Kirkwood to run some routes for us. Also, two alternative transportations. Actually, I have three now, since I put this report together. EMT, Zipcare, and we are looking at ALC, or American Logistics Company, just to help us out with some of our routes, because of the driver shortages with the other two companies. So, this is a snapshot of our district operated or district paid employees. Director of Transportation is myself. We have a, a South Manager, Robin Ray. Central Manager, Kevin Knuckles. We have four supervisors, which is a maintenance supervisor, safety and training supervisor, road supervisor, and we have our routing supervisor. Three safety driver trainers do all of our training and schooling for our new drivers and monitors. We have five school bus technicians, two fueler or utility folks, as we call them. Five dispatchers. We have two in each garage, and then one kind of floats between the two garages as needed. That also oversees all of our alternative transportation. We have board-approved 137 driver positions. Currently, we have 21 of them positions that are open. Monitors, we have 108 board-approved positions and 23 open positions, and two secretaries. One is my direct secretary, and the other secretary is for the two managers. That's a lot of our, our payroll. Next slide, please. Route snapshot is South Garage. We have, currently have 50 routes. South Garage, 53 routes. North Garage, 116. Contract with Parkway for 19 routes, Melville for 12 routes, Kirkwood for six routes. And then, Cal, or Alternative Transportation, we currently have 56 routes. And you may wonder how we do that with our shortages that we have. We have combined a lot of routes this past year. We really have a good workforce. Our drivers and monitors really care about our kids, and they double and triple up on their workloads every day, and we'll see some overtime with that, but we appreciate what they do. Next slide, please. So, our current snapshot of our vehicles, we have Type A, which is the smaller van-type vehicles. We have 13 lift buses, and then 71 Type A straight vans. Our Type C lift, which this year, we've got 22 new vehicles in that 95. And then, we have 18 Type C without lift. And the average, our average fleet age is five years. We have a 10-year rotation cycle on our larger buses, the Type C, and a seven-year on our vans, our small vans. And then, we have eight service vehicles. Some of the goals we've accomplished this year and last year, increased board-approved positions to meet daily operational needs without jeopardizing student safety. You guys approved in July of 2020 for five additional monitors and five additional drivers and a manager. We have fulfilled that manager slot, and are still working on getting our driver and monitor slots filled at this time. Update internet systems, facilitate current and potential acquired operating systems. This goal was met in 2020. We have the speed that we need to make things, keep things going. Add GPS systems to all buses. This goal, again, was met in June of '21 this year, which is a piece of the GPS and parent app, which I'll get to here in a little bit. Implement parent app tracking system. This is currently in process. So, all, all programs are communicating now, thanks to Doug and Chris's team. They've really helped us in getting that. And that's been a challenge, just to get all 22 districts, our district, to kind of communicate with our routing software, and then push that out, notifications out to the parents. So, we are to that point where we're going to roll it out to our schools, and then we'll be doing it this month, and then we'll, all of our partner schools will be to follow, hopefully, in the next month or so. Slide please. Begin property search for our central property. As Jeff said earlier, we made that purchase, I believe, in October. So, we are ready now for planning and building, so. Fill out positions, which is, we're still working on that. Determine the most effective advertisement system. I've worked with our HR department, our HR Director, and our Communications Department, and I think we've got a good process going. We just kind of started that up at the beginning of December. So, we've got about 910 monitor applicants and about 90 driver applicants. So, we're working to go to those interviews, and hopefully, we'll start filling our staff fairly quickly, and it's, it's been pretty successful. So, through Indeed, and then I go on when they, when they apply on Indeed, and then have them, again, fill out a, an application on our, on our website, and then we do the interviews. So, we've got a whole team of people helping us with that, so that's, that's working out really well. Training the subpool. We've kind of put that on hold until we're fully staffed. It doesn't really make sense for us to have a subpool when we can't hire the drivers that we need. So, hopefully, when we get to that point, and then we'll still have some candidates for our subpool. Training all the pertinent staff on transportation data collection. That's kind of on hold to COVID. So, we're going to put some training mechanisms, but a lot of our staff's hands-on, face-to-face. So, we're going to kind of hold off on that a little bit and try to hopefully project that for next year. Add parent application, utilize the GPS. The GPS piece of that, again, was completed in June of this past year, so we know where the buses are at all times, or where they've been. And so, and that will then partner with our parent app program, and it will work great. Increase staff parking in South Garage for our employees. With the construction that's going on down there with the Bridges Program, I'd tell you graciously made, I think, 45 new parking spots for us. So, we now have ample parking for our, our drivers and monitors, who are now having to work, walk so far to get to the, to get to the office. Again, the, our bus purchase that says 25, but actually, we've got 25 of the larger Type C buses this year, and they have been delivered in the last couple of weeks. Research, student tracking attendance system. This is complete, again, with a lot of work from Doug's team. We've kind of made everything.
Good, please, Joe.
Thank you. Research student tracking attendance. Again, as I said, Doug and his team have done a great job. There's been a lot of work and effort put into that. We hired a developer to put together a program specifically for transportation, our transportation specifically. All of our buses now have a tablet. They sign in on the tablet. It gives them route-by-route, step-by-step routing instructions. We're signing kids on and off routes, and so that's working really well. That'll help with some of our Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements that Jeff's looking for. And establish electronic access for required transportation forms. That was, again, developed into the same application I'm talking about, a program that I'm talking about. Currently, we use that for our driver. Before they go out, they do a pre-trip on their bus. They inspect the bus before they go out, and then again, when they get back. We're currently utilizing the app for that. The other piece that we're working on now is just the communication for more doing student referrals or informational stuff, so that we can contact the case manager or teacher when we have a situation that we would like some help getting addressed. Obtain a fully-staffed workforce. As you see, you'll see through the slides, that's kind of an ongoing work in progress. Hopefully, we can eliminate that soon, but we'll keep plugging along. Establish a committee to develop students for student travel training. Again, due to COVID, we've kind of put that on hold, because that's a lot of interaction one-on-one, one-on-one transportation staff and students. Again, we'll begin to construct on new transportation facility, which we'll talk about in the next slide. And then, a year or two, again, we're looking at, we're purchasing about 25 new buses and about $1.5 million for that. Next slide, please. Updated, upgrade, outdated maintenance equipment. We are looking at doing something next year for that. I budgeted for that next year, so hopefully, that'll be done next year, so it'll wait until year three. Begin building the new central garage location, and Toby will probably give you more accurate numbers, but I was kind of speculating about $6 million for that project. Set individual transportation budget for SSD schools and partner schools. We've moved that to 23, 24 budget. Again, that's kind of due to COVID, because we haven't seen a lot of field trips. We're not doing a lot of activities. We're not doing a lot of Special Olympics or things we've done in the past. So, kind of the goal there is just to make people more accountable for what their spendings are as far as field trips and specialized trips and activities, just so they have an understanding of transportation costs, making sure they're doing it for the best interest of the children, and that's what we, so we like to set separate budgets for specifically our schools. Review contracted services. Again, we'll talk about it on the next slide. And then, again, purchase about 25 school buses or $1.5 million worth of buses. So, yeah, as I talked about before, we'll review contracts for partnership agreements for efficiencies economically. Again, that'll be the year that our, our North Garage comes up, that's contracted service. So, we'll see if that still makes sense for us to remain contracted, or look at the possibilities of taking that transportation back in-house. We'll also, at that point, review our partnership agreements with Parkway, Melville, and Kirkwood, just again, see if that continues to make sense for our student and the district. Review current training modules for compliance. We are actually in the process of doing that this year, so you should see in your report next year that that's been completed. And again, in fourth year, we're looking at purchasing our 25 school buses to maintain our fleet protection. Slide? And the goal in year five is to move into our new central garage facility. One of our goals is to upgrade the camera system for live view. The board recommended my last report that we get that done now. So, that is up and rolling as of July of this past year. So, we can see anything that goes on. If a parent calls in and says they've seen a bus doing something inappropriate out on the road, they can. they can, I can then get that camera uploaded and downloaded when it comes into the transportation yard. And also we can see them without having to pull the hard drive. So we can do that. Video surveillance. Next was install video surveillance for transportation buildings and lots. Our South Garage is somewhat completed. We have several cameras down there just because it's on the South Tech campus. So we do have some cameras that are observing our buses. Our North Garage was completed this past school year. And our Central Garage, we're probably just, we've got some temporary stuff up now that we'll hold off on until we move into our new facility for all the camera systems there. And again, we'll purchase our twenty-five school buses in year five. Questions, please?
I have a few. I'll start with the last. I noticed that in each one of the years of the presentation, we're looking at purchasing the twenty-five buses. Is that?
It's on an average.
Twenty-five per year, meaning that we want to purchase it five times. That becomes?
On an average, it depends. On average, we do fifteen to twenty-five. So I just kind of put that twenty-five number out there.
But each year we're doing that?
Correct. Yep, we have a hundred and ninety-six buses. And like I said, with our, our type A, our vans, I think we have eighty, a couple of them. So those are, we rotate those out every seven years and then ten years on the larger buses, just because we see a higher maintenance cycle or schedule and they start increasing. Plus, if we trade them in, we can still get a better trade value at that point.
I don't remember exactly the year that they said that they wound up all to go electric.
Electric, we're still.
That's part of what's, that we're looking at in reference to our buses?
Currently, they do not have, our buses travel on average about a hundred and twenty-five miles a day. Currently, the only electric buses are about sixty to eighty miles per day. So we could not operate currently with the electric buses that are there. But with technology, I look for that to come. I mean, the electric vehicles that are coming out are now going, you know, four, five hundred miles. So I'm hoping that we get to the stage where we can start looking at buses there. The other thing we've got to consider when we look at that too is just the return on investment. So right now, we have the seven-year, ten-year cycle. We're probably going to go much farther. So the other components still start wearing out. So we'll have to do some research on that. And I'm in contact with some of the other districts across the state who have started implementing them. But a lot of them are again, local districts that, you know, do the twenty-five or thirty miles a day. So they're able to accomplish that. Still on our radar and we're still looking at it, but not at this time.
My other question is, based upon logistics, in some of the vacancies that we have for drivers and monitors, are we finding that we're having more difficulty in certain areas of our district to be able to maintain consistency?
Yes, sir. We have, our biggest challenge is our South Garage. We pull a lot of folks from the central area, from the north area. And a lot of the north area don't want to drive, you know, the twenty-five miles to get to our South Garage. So that has become a challenge for us. In scenarios like that, we, we have our central and north garages help us out with some of them routes. So we also considered possibly, even though economically it doesn't make sense because of the travel distance, possibly moving some of the routes to those two locations if we can't fully staff our South Garage.
What did you agree that we would increase salaries to for monitors and bus drivers?
We're working on, we're trying to decrease the number of steps. So I think we started the process last year. I think that's a two-year program where we're going to try to shorten those steps so they can get to the higher levels quicker. We increased our starting rates. We also increased the level we pay for experience. So monitors, now we pay all the way up to our level eight. I think we have twelve levels there. And our drivers, I think we currently have sixteen and we pay up to twelve years of experience there. So with that, I think we're competitive with, with the data that sticks around. But again, we're also working on shortening the, shortening the steps for our drivers as well as trying to get to that top level.
We have a two-year agreement right now.
Correct, yep.
That agreement was for how much basically that we're looking to pay?
I don't have that in front of my mind.
I think it was a three and a half and a three and a half, if I remember correctly, yeah.
But I don't know, I will let you know on the Friday memo what the, oh, actually a little bit.
Going back a moment to the logistics, I noticed that I got a email this last week from my district in Haysville because of our challenge in getting adequately staffed buses, both drivers and monitors. And several days that, particularly the cold days that we had, that we didn't have enough buses to make the routing quick. So they were asking talent to be able to hopefully run kids, you know? That didn't go very well.
Sure, understandable. That's.
Those kinds of things happen. I'm assuming that that then throws out routing situations and abilities to be able to service kids in our community because now times have been pushed back regarding kids actually getting to school. So instead of being there at the.
Start time.
Start time, they're getting there hours later, if at all.
That is correct. And we have that challenge at all three of our facilities. Again, we are very short staffed. We do the best we can. Typically, we're looking at one or two routes per day. And we try to take the shortest route. And we also try to move that around. So if I don't, we're not, we're able to pick up your students today, I will make sure that we're not doing that again tomorrow. So we can get our driver situations under control. We're probably looking for more of that. The partnering districts are not able to help us out. As a matter of fact, they're kind of leaning towards us to help them out. And in any scenario, we're, we're just not able to. So we're doing the best we can. We're really working with partnering ones, you know, our districts. But the challenges are just not people available.
Now, we have partnering district superintendents contacting me. I know they're talking to Kenny. They're winding up, they're really having difficulties. And so they're calling us to say, can we share some of your routes?
I think some of the districts are even talking about canceling transportation for now just because of the shortages, which I hope we don't get to that point because we are, we are functioning. We do have those one or two routes per day that we're not covering. So hopefully we'll get to the point where we can survive and keep our heads above water. I myself have been driving routes every day for the last week, which is first, my first time in probably nine years for the district that I've had to drive a route myself. But it's good to get back out there and kind of be parents and see the kids and kind of see what my folks do, so. Any other questions?
Yes, well, thank you. Thank Doug. And app tracking.
Yep.
I think parents will love it.
They will love it. I have had a few parents that have stayed in contact with, with me through the whole process. And they're very happy too that we're, we're getting this implemented. So with the.
My, my question on that is, I think it's a great idea. I think it'll really alleviate some fears and all of that. Are we going to do any training on that, on how to use the app or?
It's pretty self, it's pretty self-explanatory. So they'll receive, all parents will receive an email that tells them how to load the app, whether it's an Android or an iPhone, how to do that, how to communicate, how to share. If I want to share my information with you so that you can see where my child is, then we can do that. But it's child-specific. But they can, I think, share with up to three people their routing information. So if they have a caregiver, a husband, wife, whatever that may be, they can share that information with them as well. And we can push out notifications and they can reply back to us. So it'll alleviate a lot of that phone calls. As you guys have probably heard, and Dr. Keenan's probably heard, sometimes we're not always able to grab the phone because we're on the two-way or we're dealing with another situation. So that will alleviate a lot of those phone calls and push out those notifications quickly. And a lot of those phone calls that are coming in is, you know, it's, the bus is supposed to be here five minutes. Good, can you tell me where it's at? They won't have to have that anymore because they'll know when it's on.
And it's, you know, also getting information with our PTO, their family engagement, and then also through our SEDPAC. So our SSD PAC will be able to get information from the families and all that. So, you know, we've been, stepped in this and do this for the last three years. And I think this is really going to be a real good support for our families so that they know when the bus is coming, they know, and they know when it's coming back so that they're home to get their child. Especially our students, especially our, our students with medical fragile, those are the students that we want to make sure that when they go home, that there's something there.
And with the program, they'll be able to set up zones. So they'll know, I want to know when the bus is a mile away. So I can, if I'm not home, I can call my child and tell them, hey, it's time to go to the bus stop. Or as a parent that is there knows to walk their, their child off of the bus stop because they'll be there, you know, within a few minutes. And then they can set a zone, you know, if they, when he gets to school or when he gets to the house, wherever they want to set them zones. Again, it's all customizable to what they want, not to what we want them to see.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing and the drivers and all others doing to keep our kids safe and getting them where they need to be. I did have a small question. If you don't mind. I was looking at some of the data collecting. You mentioned data collecting that is COVID.
Data collection has been a topic that we've talked about in the board. And it's just a matter of getting correct data from the IP, through the case manager, through our entire system, through twenty-two systems throughout the school district to where it successfully gets to transportation correctly the first time. We have done a lot of work on getting that. We're not a hundred percent to where it needs to be. And a lot of that is just training. We need to get the training out there, what our expectations are, who needs to do what piece, and show them how to do, and do that.
Do you have some criteria in mind for which that will be resumed?
We have some modules in place now and training we've done in the past. We don't have, and I don't know if we're going to in the future. We used to have a secretary trainer. And I'm working in it with an individual in HR now. And I'm hoping we can utilize him a lot more in providing some of this training. Matter of fact, he's already putting some moodles together for us. I'm not sure what a moodle is. It's a training, but he's, he's working on that for us now. So hopefully we'll be able to roll out some of that soon. Just so everybody knows what the expectation. We have a lot of new people that come in. There's a lot of new folks touching the information that we need. This parent app will also help with a lot of that too because I can send a fillable form to them just to make sure that all the information we have on file is correct. So we're not routing a student to an incorrect address, to an incorrect school, making sure if their child utilizes a wheelchair or sending a bus or a lift. So there's just a lot of information that we push back and forth directly with parents. So we're kind of, I'm not moving real fast on that because I'm thinking a lot of that communication can come from my department and the, and the parents correctly, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm actually pleased for five years of the three-year plan review.
It is good evening, President Cunio, Vice President Patrath, Board of Education, and Dr. Keenan. My name is Jeff Hogg and I'm the chief operating officer for Special School District. With us this evening is Toby Kozlowski, Director of Maintenance and Facilities, or Facilities and Operations. He's going to provide the five-year facilities. Thanks for your review this evening.
Thank you very much. This will be a brief overview. We have a lot going on, but I'll do the best I can. Real quickly, facilities, we have one director, two managers, one north, one south, two V's, which were new positions that you approved recently, and sixteen staffs. We have two maintenance buildings, buildings. One we built three years ago. And the second one, we took over horticulture at North Tech and created a second building there. We have seven schools and twenty-two actual buildings throughout the district. Maintenance currently takes care of all the infrastructure, maintenance needs, mechanical systems, HVAC throughout the district. We, as of yesterday, have done one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five work orders. We're on track to do five thousand, which is average for us. That includes everything from a mechanical failure somewhere in the building to hanging a picture for a teacher. We're also in charge of custodial. We, we have struggled somewhat with custodial this year. Not so much from our point of view, but the subcontractor is having labor issues like everyone else. We take care of hazardous waste throughout the district. We have SITEX as a third-party administrator for abatement for asbestos. And we use Crystal Clean for our issues that we, we're a small generator of toxic waste, I guess, with our shop classes. We work with DNR on that. Grounds keeps us busy. We have a hundred and eighty-six acres. And actually, with the new purchase for the central garage property, we've added eight point nine acres more. We currently have one point two million, and actually it's an increase. I haven't had time to calculate it, square feet under roof. Last year was our first initial year with the snow removal initiative. And I think it was very successful. We, I think we were able to accomplish all of our district's needs as far as ice and snow. We're on top of it. And we hope for a good year this year, once we have some snow. It looks like maybe Saturday we might have some. We also take care of all the groundwater management with our rain gardens, detention, retention basins, underground detentions and stormwater. So for me, the fun part starts, and that's the capital projects. Last fiscal year, we took care of North Tech by adding security vestibules, new front entrance, offices, a nurses' station. We also did a lot of security fencing, gates, all-new asphalt around the entire campus, striping. We redid the bullpen area, which is actually a work in progress. We did a lot of shop remodels. We had scheduled a roofing replacement over the front part of North Tech, but we had to delay that because of supply chain issues. We couldn't do it within the timeframe we needed. We also added ADA ramps to the front of the building and between Ackerman and North Tech. So it was, it was a very eventful year. And that was year one of our five-year plan. Picture of North Tech, this is the front lobby. It's kind of an odd picture, but we use LED lighting throughout the new remodel as much as we could, it saves energy. But it also gives the opportunity for the students and staff to use colors in the front entrance. And they seem to have a lot of fun with it. This is a very rewarding project. I've heard from Dr. Wallace and the students and staff that they really felt appreciated with the interest we put into the school this past year. The second picture is the new front entrance and bus canopy. If you recall the old one, this is a hundred and eighty degrees difference. It was dark and dank and wet, terrible. So this has been a fun project, really fun project.
I've not seen the check list. I, I saw the old one, it was horrible.
Oh, please take the time to come see it. It's really a big change. I heard you like the color blue. Because there's a lot of blue up there. Our current fiscal year is also just as busy. We are, we are working on South Tech right now. That's a nine point three million dollar project. It's going to be very similar to North Tech. We're going to redo the front office area. Security aspects of the project are being undertaken. Parking lot, roofing, so there's a lot going on there. The second, the second thing that we worked on this year was something we didn't really plan on, but it worked out great. There's a gym at Litzinger that was not being used. So we converted it into the new audiology department. And it's been, it's been a really, really good project. The staff is just excited. They, they opened up for business last Monday. And they're just, I mean, you have to come see it. It's just, it was, it was amazing transformation. You wouldn't even know it, that it wasn't gym.
And I would say with that, because the audiology, it was in the middle of a hallway before. And so it was really not a convenient place for families to bring in their children. So they support all of our students who are needing to have hearing checks. And so they have to go through all the way to the school. And now with the being on the wing, they can come in a separate entrance. It's a, it's a very nice, very nice space. It's a good representation of when people come and see Special School District that it's not just trying to fit your way through it. It's a real welcoming place for our students and our families to be able to bring their children. So, very nice space. I even brought my husband over there to check it out. Thank you very much.
They also have their own address, own mail, it's their own parking lot. So it's almost like it's a separate building, even though it's attached to Litzinger. So really, really, the design was amazing, so. We also started Bridges. It's under demolition right now. It's the old Main Street Electrical Building. It's about ten thousand square foot remodel. And it's going to be the new Bridges. And then we'll have a half-court in the middle of it for basketball. It'll have classrooms, five classrooms, I believe, offices, security. And it's, it promises to be state-of-the-art floor bridges. This current fiscal year, we also reorganized the facilities department. We, I went around and spoke to all the principals to see what their needs were. Visited with all of my staff to figure out how we can improve things. Communication was a big thing, but they, they would, would have liked a liaison between management and staff. So we have these two. and staff, so we have these two positions awarded, I don't know if that's the right word. We also are looking at a, hopefully a robust year for interns with Mr. Glady and classes up at North Tech right now. We have a lot of interest in our four positions for interns with our department. That's something that with COVID the last several years that we have not been able to implement. We also did a lot of asphalt permeable, concrete for the.
What is permeable?
So that's part of our Storm Tech Underground Retention. It's required by MSD and all of our new projects, you have to add that to it. So this is concrete that actually allows water to go through it and into a retention basement underneath it. So it takes up a little less space in the big rain gardens and those big ditches you see with things growing in it. We put it underground, so. We had a roofing replacement planned for North last year. We were unable to get that started, as I said, but we do have Litzinger and North Tech back on slated for a new roof in certain sections. I did want to say that both South Tech and Bridges are running congruent with each other, and they will both be done before school starts this fall. The first picture is the north view of South Tech. We tore off a section of the building, cleared everything out, it's going to get retaining well. This will be the new bus entrance for the building, kind of right there in the middle where that dark spot is. So we moved the drop-off to the side of the building, and the front will have something similar to North Tech with a lobby and offices right there, so parents and kids coming to Litzinger School will have something completely new to look at. It also helps with security with the buses being on the side of the building and off that 50th Street front. The second picture is not a great picture, but it shows the canopy gone and the current front elevation of the, of South Tech. The next picture, sorry, I apologize, it was a little foggy. It was literally six o'clock and foggy as can be, but if you can imagine, that was a gym, and now it's the new audiology. And again, I would encourage, if you have time, to stop by and see it. Year three, as mentioned by Dr. Hogg and Kenny Mulder, is when we plan on doing Central Garage. The ground has been purchased, as you've heard before. Design is well underway. They've been working with Kenny, trying to get all of his needs at once, within reason. We hope that, we're hoping for 4.5 to 6, so we're kind of betting on the lower level, but with everything the way it has been in our trade, it's really volatile right now. So fortunately, with South Tech and Bridges, so far, we've been able to get our steel ordered and concrete blocked, and everything has been working out great. We finished audiology starting in COVID, ending in COVID, and made it basically on budget, which is pretty, pretty.
We're not going to end up like Francis' house.
No, no, sir. No, sir. So that's year three. Year four. Year four, I would, I would say that we're, we're in the, kind of in the midst of starting planning for central, central office. Or that's a kind of a guesstimation. I wish I could give you more than that, nine to 12. It really is going to depend on how the market is at that time. It's a little far out for me to forecast. And year five is kind of a catch-all. We have probably a handful of projects that are 2 million or less. We are looking at all the playgrounds that are all obsolete, and in some cases dangerous. We're trying to replace all of those, which will reflect parallel play, be age-appropriate for our kids, because a lot of our current playgrounds are not. We are also going to be addressing all the infrastructure issues that we have, old electrical, collapsed drains, switchgear that's been 50, 60 years old, that when those go out, we can't get parts for. So we're going to kind of get a kind of a 10-year, starting in five years, a 10-year plan on replacement of all of that. We are also working with Kevin Andrew with CTE to remodel shops as needed to meet his five-year plan for CTE. We're also looking at plumbing and drain issues, art slash analysis is something we're looking at, the safety issue for all of our electrical rooms. And I'm sorry if I ran through that so fast, but I'm to the questions page, which was my goal, so. Do you have any questions?
Director, you have a question about the central office?
Yeah. I understand that this decision, as far as the planning, initiation of the planning was seated to be by membership of the board, so I was just curious about just rationale and justification for that big expenditure.
Which, on which one?
The remodeling the central office.
Yeah, no, that is a, it's a great question. It's something that the district had a very good plan for. The district made sure that every building was renovated and updated prior to doing central office. That's something that we looked at to make sure that our students and teachers were taken care of first. And so as we looked at it and as we planned, you know, last year we were looking in that $8 million range as an estimate, but it's been so far out, we still didn't really know where that would fall. We thought we had a pretty good handle on it, and when you get the inflation stuff after the, you know, the COVID spike, we're looking maybe in that nine to nine and a half, maybe even up to that. I think a 12 would be on the high end, but that's kind of where we were looking at that. We know it's a big expense. I think the last time the building was renovated here was 30 years ago, and when they did it then, it was a cost of six, six and a half million dollars, maybe. So there was some money put into it. But again, and I know Dr. Keenan shares this as well, we wouldn't do anything that didn't affect kids if we hadn't already addressed what our students need. And we'll continue to look at the small projects such as some playgrounds, ramps, hallways as we go, but we're to the point now where all of our buildings have been touched, renovated and fixed, ready to go for our students where we feel that now this would be beneficial to the district at this point.
Was there areas of grade need that were crying out, or what was the initiation? Is it just a matter of aging of the building or natural aging, or are there things that are dysfunctional with this building that I'm aware of?
No, there's nothing that's majorly dysfunctional or that keeps the building from being efficient. It is, it's age, as we said. I mean, as you kind of look around, you can kind of see it's dated. The, there are, well, there are inefficiencies in the layout as far as the way the cubicles, the departments are set up, so we'd really like to open that up. We'd really like to update some, you know, carpet. It won't hurt that we're going to update the plumbing and the electric and the technology because it's nearing a time where it should be changed and should be upgraded. So there's no glaring deficiencies right now, but it's probably time for the entire building to be upgraded.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
All right. Now, do we need to wait till seven o'clock? All righty. Onward. We've already set the pledge, we can technically just go straight to all the harder.
Director Adner. Director Byers. Director Fox.
Here.
Director Hudson.
Here.
Director Muller.
Here.
Vice President Patrow.
Here.
President Cunio.
All right, we have a, let's pull on. CDC mandatory COVID leave policy updates.
So our policies, President Muller, Kevin Andrew will be updating the board on our recommendations to review our current CDC guidance and how it matches up with our policies. And also Tracy Baroso, who is our interim director in Human Resources, she's also going to assist with some of the language and some of the.
All right. Good evening, President Cunio, Board of Directors, Dr. Keenan. I'm Kevin Andrew, Executive Director of Career Technical Education and College and Career readiness. Tonight, I'm wearing my board policy hat in this presentation. As Dr. Keenan said, with me is Tracy Baroso from Human Resources, and so we're going to roll through some updates to policy GBBBB. So next slide, or actually, if we can pull up the slide. So while that's pulling up, I'm going to talk a little bit about why we're making changes now to GBBBB. As you recall, we last looked at that back in August. So there are new, so why are we making, we're going to talk about why we're making changes now. We're going to review the types of leave that are available, and then what does this mean for employees. Going to go down to the next slide. So why are we making changes now? So first and foremost, there was new CDC guidance that was released on December 27th of 2021, so we spent some time processing that new guidance to inform what we're doing now. Streamline our processes to get information to those who need it quicker. Partner districts are updating their processes and procedures, and so we need to adapt our process so we can also navigate around all of the different policies and processes that are happening throughout St. Louis County and our partner districts and other work sites. And then also, there's the increased demand for testing and changes in testing availability, so all those factors came into play in looking at policy GBBBB. Next slide. So summary of our key changes. So on the right-hand side of the screen, what you have is the new CDC guidance, and really, there are three big pieces from there that we had to pull into our, our changes. So first, if you test positive for COVID-19, the isolation period has moved from 10 days to five days according to the CDC if you're asymptomatic or symptoms are resolving. When we talk about symptoms are resolving, that means that an individual no longer has a fever, they no longer have a runny nose, and they no longer have a significant cough. So you're not persistently coughing, no longer have a phlegm-producing cough, those types of diseases. Second thing is they updated the timeline for vaccination and exemption from quarantine. So previous guidance was as long as an individual had received both rounds of a two-sequence vaccination, Moderna or Pfizer, or had received Johnson &amp; Johnson, they were considered fully vaccinated, and there was nothing else they needed to do. The new guidance has now indicated that once you get six months out from Pfizer or Moderna, completing that sequence, or two months out from Johnson &amp; Johnson, that an individual would need a booster to not have to quarantine. So adjusting our guidance around that new guidance from the CDC. And the quarantine period as well was adjusted similar to if you test positive, was adjusted from five days, from 10 days to five days if an individual remains asymptomatic. From days six through 10, whether you test positive or you're on quarantine, the CDC is saying for those days six through 10, that a mask would need to be worn by that individual, preferably a surgical mask, and the district has a wide variety of those available, so we provide those to staff who need them on those days six through 10. Next slide. All right, so talking about policy GBBBB, which there are three main types of leave that are established in this policy. First and foremost is COVID vaccination leave. This is a paid leave for staff. It's up to four hours for them to go receive their vaccination. That could be their first shot, their second shot, or a booster shot. All of that's covered under vaccination looking. It also provides that staff member one full day to recover if needed if they develop symptoms within 48 hours of receiving their vaccine. So if two days after getting the vaccine, an individual has fever or high level of fatigue, and they're just not able to go to work that day, they're able to access that paid vaccination leave. The next leave that exists is COVID illness leave. So this is a paid leave if an individual tests positive for COVID-19 and is too ill to work from home. So an individual who tests positive does have the ability to work from home if that's doable, but if that person is so ill that they cannot work, this is a paid leave for that individual, and it covers anyone who tests positive. The last piece, so COVID-19 quarantine leave. This one's a little deceptive because we call it a leave, but it's not really a leave. It's permission to work from home. So an individual to be eligible for this would need to meet the definition of vaccinated that's spelled out in policy GBBBB, and then that individual, while they're working from home, would clock in and out in our workforce management system, so that's our timekeeping system. That's really important because if an individual is teaching from home, and we need to have a substitute teacher in the classroom, our payroll department is going back and looking, was that teacher absent? So let's say that there's not an absence reported. Okay, well, then now I'm going to look and see, were they clocking in and out in WFM? Because if they weren't clocking in and out in WFM, then it looks like, well, that teacher was there that day, so there shouldn't be a sub in their classroom. So for payroll purposes, it's extremely important, anybody who's got that permission to work from home, that they're clocking in and out, so payroll knows, yes, they're working from home, and that means a sub can be in the classroom to manage the class. Next slide. So some updates and changes. So one is a new definition of vaccinated for quarantine purposes. So this is to align with the new CDC guidance. As you recall, in December, when we brought to you our Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan, rolls right off the tongue, that plan, we said first and foremost for COVID, quarantine and isolation, we'd be following CDC guidance, so it's important that our policy reflects that same CDC guidance. So effective February 1st, staff would need to meet the new CDC definition of vaccinated to be allowed to work from home during a quarantine period. So that means if they have not, if it's been more than six months since they've received their two-shot sequence, or more than two months since they received Johnson &amp; Johnson, they would need to receive a booster to be able to access that leave. Next, COVID-19 home test. So this is in collaboration with St. Louis County Health Department. They talked about there's just such a high demand right now for PCR tests that we have individuals who are reporting that they've tested positive on a home test, but they can't get in to get a laboratory test for three days, four days, five days. As opposed to leaving that employee in a holding pattern, we're adapting the policy to say that the district can temporarily accept home antigen or PCR, or home-based PCR tests during windows of high periods of transmission. So GBBBB is revised to give the superintendent, in this case, Dr. Keenan, the authority to say right now, testing is not available in the clinics, and so we're going to allow people to utilize home tests during that window, and then we can roll that back as the testing capability ramps back up. And last, COVID illness leave, it adjusts this to follow CDC guidance as well. So this covers any working days during the 10 calendar days of isolation. Any working days during the first five calendar days are automatic, and then working days six through 10 just requires supervisor approval. This is a pivot, and really what it's trying to do is increase that dialogue between the employee and the supervisor during days six through 10. So that way, if an employee says, you know what, I'm starting to feel better, it's day six, I think I'll be back on day eight, the supervisor can plan ahead, as opposed to, we just presume that they're going to be out for 10 days. Our administrators and principals, they're working hard to make sure that their buildings are covered, and this is just a way to get more of that dialogue coming from the employee of, when do you think you'll be able to be back in the building? So they can adjust coverage and plan accordingly. Our previous language in the policy said that staff would automatically get 10 working days. That was back when quarantine isolation was 14 days. So now that quarantine and isolation has moved down to 10 days, potentially five days if a person is recovering or asymptomatic, we needed to have GBBB reflect those changes. Next slide. So this is just an example of what COVID illness leave would look like. So if you had employee A who is symptomatic, they've got a runny nose, they have a cough, and they test positive for COVID-19 on Monday, January 3rd, and they tell us they don't know when symptoms began. This is something that we're seeing a lot, where employees say, I've had a runny nose for a month, or I've had a cough for the last three weeks, I don't know when my symptoms began, so we take the date of the positive test. They're automatically eligible for that COVID illness leave if they're too ill to work for January 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th. If they're well enough, they'll work from home, and then they'll clock in in WFM and in out. They are eligible to return to work on January 10th. If January 9th wasn't a Sunday, they could have come back on that Sunday. If symptoms continue and they're unable to return, their supervisor may approve COVID illness leave up to January 13th, and the employee would have turned to work on January 14th. If the situation is that this employee still is not able to return at that point, then they would need to use their own PTO, and after five consecutive days of their own PTO, they would need to reach out to Human Resources regarding other leave of absence options, is how that would play out. Next slide. All right, so what does this mean for employees? Really, three big things. One, staff may need to receive the booster to meet eligibility criteria for quarantine leave by February 1st. Two, if staff test positive for COVID-19 or are identified as a close contact and are directed to quarantine, they're going to need to complete a new employee COVID reporting form. We talked about streamlining processes earlier. As Tracy can talk about, we've received a high number of positive cases or quarantines, and it's a lot to navigate all over the phone or via email, and so we've moved to an automated, automated system that Human Resources has begun utilizing this week. that Human Resources has begun utilizing this week that allows the individual, whether it's 7:00 PM or 7:00 AM, they can go in and plug in all of their information and to tell them, here's what your next steps are. Do you need to stay home? Are you able to report to work? And really trying to streamline that process. So we've digitized that process to get information to the hands of the people who need it quickest. Once that form's filled out, it sends an email to the individual who filled it out. It sends an email to their supervisor. So it gets everybody into the loop that needs to be in the loop, as well as it sends an email to Human Resources. So now everybody that needs to know the status of that employee is up to date and knows what's going on. The last big change is staff may use a home antigen COVID-19 test to prove their positive status. In that employee COVID reporting form, there's a section where they would upload their test results. So if an employee says I'm positive for COVID-19, they would either take a picture and upload their lab results, or they take a picture of that home antigen test, and they would report that as well. And so that's part of our process. Next slide. Alright, and with that, any questions?
I have.
Excellent.
One of which is the CDC guidelines. Knowledge of COVID, the different variants seems to be pretty fluid, since we've changed that a lot. This may be a temporary for our policy because we may end up having to change it again if the CDC policies come out correct.
That's correct, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure.
And that's honestly some of the biggest challenge with this, Dr. Cuneo, is it's a moving target. And so we we are we are, our safe return to in-person instruction plan is built around CDC guidelines. And so as those CDC guidelines change, then we'll have to adjust those applicable board policies. So if if Tracy and I have to come back in a couple of weeks and say, hey, guys, we got some new news, then we're going to come back in a couple of weeks, and we're going to adjust based off that new information.
It just seems that everything right now is so fluid. We're finding out more information and if different variants come out, they may change, we'll see.
Yep.
And I'm hoping though the variants come.
Right now.
We're hoping to.
And then this is a temporary policy at this point, which is set to sunset on June 30th of 2022.
I think we, the last time, which was the policy, we thought would go away, and then we had to read off it again. So it's it's been ever-changing since we introduced this policy. So I think we're all realizing this is a new reality, and that we're going to continue to pivot and to be able to make recommendations based on CDC guidance.
What's the possible in describing that? Just throw it in Friday now, so everybody can have it. Just to show the board where this COVID report is from, just so that we can see it.
We have to.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, no problem at all. We can give you the link, and you can play around and see exactly.
Go out.
See exactly what the employees.
Nobody panic if Dr. Cuneo says he's positive. We've had enough people guessing it. I've received enough Kevin and Rita with a little concern. She was like, wait a minute, he has to, he was discussing the policy.
Alright, just wanted to see the form.
Yes. And just so you know, Dr. Cuneo, that that form went live on January 7th, and we've already had 548 employees.
Wow.
Utilize that form. So they're they're utilizing it.
Good.
And it doesn't mean that everyone that filled it out is not reporting to work. It's possible they filled it out where they said, I think I have this exposure, and I'm trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do. And that's more of what Human Resources was getting bogged down with, was employees who just, they're, because the guidelines have been ever-changing, they're just not sure what to do. And so that's why we're really glad to have that at people's fingertips, where they can figure out what are their next steps.
Yeah, and we were looking at it today as a leadership theme, and it really gives more explicit and gives people information right away, so that they know that I'm asymptomatic, I've been fully vaccinated, I can still, I'm okay. So there is definite direction for our staff, and it's left cumbersome for our HR people to get back to people, because we realized once we came back on January 3rd, there were so many people who were just loading the system because they either had questions, or they actually had a positive test. So we wanted to make sure that we could respond and get back to them right away.
And I have a point, Margaret. On a policy, if you say this is an emergency because of what is happening, are we allowed to vote on this right now? Does anyone have any questions? The emergency part of this is we have to change the policy, it's quick, it's possible. So therefore, instead of having a first and second agreement, this is it. Does anyone have any difficulties with that? So will someone make a motion to accept this new draft policy?
I don't have any difficulty. I did have a question lingering, and something that came to mind in reference to again, in reference to vaccination. And I've thought about something that took place in an FAL, and you possibly know, in reference to Rogers, the quarterback, said that he was immunized. And there are reports that are starting to emerge again in reference to individuals becoming asymptomatic without having had a vaccine. So is this motion that we're going to make going to be considered? Do you have something that was in this motion or in this guideline that deals with that in reference to individuals who may be asymptomatic but did not have had a vaccine or booster?
So I believe what you're referencing, Director Faulkner, is that if an individual tests positive for COVID-19, that right now, they've got that 90-day window where they're not ordered to quarantine because they had a previous positive case? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I'm referring to the immune system that in turn creates that. You know, they're starting to say now that individuals who have had COVID and did not suffer greatly in reference to hospitalization and what have you, whose system's parted off, they've become asymptomatic. And therefore, these other variants are going to be the same, they're going to be able to deal with them in the same manner in which they've had a vaccine.
The CDC guidance is clear that they just, they refer to you are either vaccinated or you're unvaccinated, and they define that. So and we're looking at the vaccinated portion of it with regards to the quarantine. So it's clear, they give clear direction that there's different quarantines, it's practices that we have to follow if you're unvaccinated versus vaccinated.
Well, I understand the CDC, but and I know that we're.
That that's what the policy is on.
I understand. And CDC in itself, and I'm not arguing against any of this, I'm just saying, but we do know that there are question marks as to validity of some of the information that we're getting with CDC, you know. And so therefore, this issue of vaccination continues boosting. You know, I've had information given to me now that says that if you have been vaccinated and boosted, that you're going to be required to take a booster, as you mentioned, while I go, some companies every two months, others every six months, and that could go on for the next several years. And you can imagine that that's not going to be something that, once known, people are not going to strive to want to place themselves in that regiment. And so just saying, I know that we're going to run into it regardless of how much we try to do right thing according to CDC. CDC is not necessarily.
But we have to follow the science. We're following the CDC. They're they're a nationally recognized one. So we're not going to get into the political part of this. We're just going to look at what the what the science is directing, if our talent, if the CDC is that avenue.
And our primary goal is to keep the students who walk in the doors of our schools every single day as safe as possible, and the staff who walk in our building to provide the instruction as safe as possible. And so that's why we're leaning into the CDC guidance, because our number one priority is the safety of our students and staff. And that's what we're trying to put forward in this policy of GBBBB.
The other thing is, is to make sure that we know how hard it was for our students and on our staff, and we have to shut down. That's the last thing we want to do. We need weekly with superintendents with the health department and Washington University doctors, and they're all recommending that we make sure that we keep our school safe, so that our students can continue to be in person, especially our students in our SFB school. The other part of this is they know that when people are in their homes, and when they're at, when they're in, when you're in the lockdown situations, you're, they're almost free or where they're not wearing their masks. And so we feel that, you know, the schools work really hard, work with our students, work with our staff to keep it safe. And that we're, the way to do that is to have our masks available for our staff and our students, to follow the quarantining guidelines, and to make sure that, you know, when there are cases that come up, that we contact Trace to make sure that, you know, we are quarantining to keep everybody safe for that time.
I see this as only a tweaking of a previous policy.
Yeah.
Because a previous policy said, I cannot perform the CDC guidelines. And the way I see this is CDC change their guidelines. That's why I asked that question.
Yep.
My belief is CDC might change their guidelines dependent upon the current state of science, or what else we find, or what we find out at this this variant or another variant. I mean, they change their their guidelines dependent upon one of the Supreme Court rules on the, but right now, CDC guidelines is this, our policy said we're going to follow the CDC guidelines. All we're doing is tweaking our policy to make sure that we're following the CDC guidelines that we said that we're going to do.
And the big difference with that was the CDC guidance was 10 workdays. And so now with the 10 calendars, five calendar days, then it allows for us to continue to work with staff members if they're feeling okay to come back. And there's an option for that too. If they're still feeling, if they still have symptoms, there's an avenue to keep them, you know, to to continue to have them stay out and be isolated until they are not having any symptoms. So that does allow for, that's a major part of this, is really that from that full 10 working days down to the five calendar days. But we still monitor if people are still symptomatic at this stage.
My question that on the policy itself, on how it changed where it says, you go the five PTO days. Then you contact. And then, then you would go on a different week. What if you had additional PTO time? Or what if you had additional sick time? Am I jumping into your field now, so maybe we?
Well, now, yeah, so if they're, if they continue to be symptomatic, symptomatic, sick after that, it's going to be five days of COVID illness leave, five days additional, five days that the supervisor can, so that's that's 10 calendar days.
10 days.
Then they can use five days of their own PTO. If they are.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. If they are still sick after that three weeks, we really want to be talking to them about possible FMLA leave, because something else is probably going on. They might have a long-term effect to this. And we really want to be making sure that we're giving them that FMLA information and and supporting them in any way we can.
But they could still use if they had additional sick time.
It would, the FMLA does use their sick time. We just want to get them protected under FMLA first, but it's still using their sick time, yes.
FMLA has a paid and unpaid option, depending on what the individual's leave balance is.
Right.
Any other questions? Would someone like to make a question except this? Okay, I want to make sure that I have, I have Katie and Tiffany on, on, don't worry. Alrighty, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion, Garrett. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Wait, I'm sorry. Wait, would someone like to make a motion for a closed meeting of Board of Education, January 11th at 7:00 PM, immediately following this meeting, which would make it at 7:12? Don't move.
Second.
Take on this.
Second.
And need to roll a call on this one.
Director Faulkner? Director Hudson?
Yes, here.
Director Muller?
Yes.
Vice President Petrov?
Yes.
And President Cuneo?
Yes.
Alright, now I need a motion. Second?
Second.
Good. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Somebody ever wrote that one down? Alright.